And then I'll see there. Okay, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to tonight's special study session. Everybody would like to stand and vote with some allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion? Move to approve the agenda? So, motion by Jess Lynn, seconded by Jeanne. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Craig.
Hey, thank you very much. So, this is a study session, presentation to the board regarding 122. Mr. Budget, I just want to make a few introductory remarks. It has five different funds that we account for, and it's, we use the governmental accounting rules. Discuss each of the five funds, and at the end of the public hearing, next Wednesday, in order to formally adopt the budget, the board needs to adopt a resolution that's going to have the amount of expenditures allowed by each fund, and the par-loss is called appropriation. So, we'll see a resolution in the board packet. We'll have another public hearing, might be another public hearing, next Wednesday at 6:30. And the hearing will consist of another presentation like this, probably shorter, depending on how many questions the board wants to ask. That budget, it is a enrollment projection for four years, and also the staffing, and certainly the dollars for each fund. So, I just wanted to show you, the very first page is the actual summary of each of the funds. So, hopefully the pages are numbered together. And I'm going to discuss each of these funds, just in a nutshell. We'll talk about the general fund first. That is the largest fund in the district, and when Jeanne and I had a chat a couple of weeks ago, the general fund basically is the fund that records all transactions that are not recorded in the other funds. So, it's kind of the catch-all. The other funds are more specific for certain activities and expenditures. So, we have the general fund, then we'll talk, again, this is the state's accounting technique. Remember, the general fund is number 10. I'm not sure why I used the number 1 to ask number 10. The capital projects fund is number 20. That source fund is number 30. These will be more founded packets. The associated student body fund is number 40, and you'd think that the transportation vehicle fund would be 50, but it is number 90. I don't know why, but that's how it is. So, I will discuss each of these. First of all, we're going to go through the general fund, and maybe I should just give a brief history lesson of how schools are funded, and certainly, maybe if you want to chime in, since you've had experience with this, and then again, too. The general fund has many different programs. The biggest program is the basic education program, and that is a state mandated, right? The state's current duty is to provide for the education of its children, and the basic education model has been tweaked over the years, but the main driver of the the general fund and this get is enrollment. So, enrollment generates a certain number of staff ratios, and the state, again, has tweaked these ratios over the years, and I can just give you an example. A number of years ago, they had what they call the prototypical school, and the elementary school, so is in there in the state's accounting, is grades K through 6, and with a basic enrollment of 400. So, if that was the perfect model, if we had K through 6, and we had 450 full-time equivalent students, then that would generate 1.253 principles. Certainly, the ratios are different. They have, obviously, more or less than 400. And just maybe going on, just maybe another couple of ratios, counselors for that 400 at the elementary level is 0.493. So, obviously, we have twice, we have 800 kids in grades K through 6, and we'll be able to have almost one counselor. Middle school is grades 7 through 8, and they have a little higher basic enrollment as far as the prototypical school. 432, students generates 1.35 principles, and 1.2.
432?
432.
And what was the percentage?
1.35. We'll go over the enrollment a little bit later, but just to give you a flavor of how, and of course, it goes on, there's librarians, there's nurses, there's psychologists, then there's the classified staff, office support, students. All these ratios are based upon the full-time equivalent students. So, enrollment is what drives the basic education model. High schools, grades 9 to 12, basic enrollment of 600, would generate 1.88 principles, and so on. Now, what's interesting is that as far as the classroom teachers, so those are like non-teachers, but the teachers are based on class size, and for grades K through 3, the class size of the state would fund would be 17, so 17 students for one teacher. Now, in only K through 3, you have to prove that you have met that ratio. So, let's say that, for example, that we have in K through 3 throughout the district, 19 is the class size, the average class size, then the state will fund 19. So, we have to prove that you have 17. Then, just for-
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does that mean all classrooms that are kids who are not to be at 17, or it's going to be 3 out of 5?
It's average.
Average.
So, we're going to take, you know, classroom A plus classroom B for K through 3.
Okay.
So, something else applied for us to be average. Fourth grade, the state funds at 27, and fifth and sixth is also at 27, and 7 through 8 is 28.5. In 9 through 12, they funded 28.74. So, certainly, you can see the state's focus is, or class sizes in K through 3. So, that's just a brief little, you know, explanation of the basic education piece of the general fund. Now, I know, Matt, at the end, we talked, you know, the past few years about different types, different colors of dollars, just as an analogy, because there are many different strengths attached to the non-basic education programs. For example, federal programs like Title I, Title II, other state programs, learning assistance program, all of those, LAP, state bilingual, they have totally different funding models, which is not really worth probably going into at this time. But both funds, those programs, I should say, pay for themselves. So, they have revenue, and then we budget our expenses to cover that revenue. So, there's no deficit spending per se in those other programs in the general fund. The other programs that are funded, basic education also would include student support, and that would be, you would know that no profit $97 will be the school board, the superintendent, the business office, maintenance and grounds, all those support services. Transportation and food service, those are funded separately. So, those aren't included in that enrollment model. I'd say that the students and technology, those staff units are all funded based on the enrollment.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know the answer, but I think it's important. So, the state funding model for principals, so let's go back to that.
Uh huh, okay.
Let's say, okay, enrollment for middle school 7 through 8 is base enrollment of 432 equals 1.35.
Right.
We have, if we have more-
So, we have 500.
So, in that 7 through 8, do we get incremental addition?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So, basically, the formula would be, you know, 432 equals 1.3, but, you know, 6 or 864 would be 2.7.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's all, it's all on a sliding scale. Those are the base percentages. So, as far as these colors of dollars, so program dollars, so when we use the word categorical or program dollars, those are non-basic, and those have specific rules and regulations that will be spent in those programs. And so, those have main strengths attached to them. So, we would call those red dollars, because they only can be spent in those specific programs. Now, basic education, as green dollars, we can spend more than we're receiving in revenue from the state. We can transfer money to the other funds, and there's not as many strengths attached to the non-program dollars. So, that's, I thought, would be important to talk about that. So, moving on to any questions on, just a quick little snippet of how districts are funded. So, first of all, I want to talk about the challenges that we as a district are facing, and we have faced for quite some time. Probably first and foremost is our enrollment that has declined over the years. So, page 2 of the handout shows the history of our enrollment from 2009, 10 school year, through last year, 2020, 21. Then you can see that the top graph there, which is being showing, shows a pretty healthy decline from the 9th, 10th school year, and this is the average for the year. It's not October 1, this is the year-to-date average. So, we've gone from 2854 full-time students to the end of 2009, 2010. Last year, we had 2453. So, that's a pretty dramatic decrease. Right now, the basic education allocation per student is almost $9,000. So, you can see there's a lot of dollars that have gone elsewhere. Again, there's reasons for that. We can be, I don't know, not going to get into, but that's one of our major challenges.
I got a question. Is this typical of most school districts right now, what's going on?
I would say yes, for those that I'm familiar with, with COVID stuff, enrollment has dropped dramatically. But regardless, right, has had a, has had a decline, as you can see this year.
Yeah, due to COVID, there's been kind of a competition for service providers. Our experience has kind of, then, we've watched people go to private providers as well as online providers who have had established programs. So, last year, as we, I think it was like, yeah, last year, we went into this, I wrote a letter to the editor asking for parents and patrons to please stick with us as we kind of weathered through the complications. But yeah, it's typical fact, there's a separation there, that people are saying, why, like a private school didn't do different things, some public schools, they had, really, that's based upon the fact that we take money from the state. So, we're required to have certain policies in place and do things.
So, that's obviously a big challenge. The other challenge that we face is that we do have staff that, number 1, is paid more than the state's average. So, our average teacher salary, administrative salary, classified salaries on the average are more than what the state funds us. So, that's a concern, and then also I would think that some of the numbers for these different categories are also higher than what the state funds us. So, that's a challenge. Now, in the past, we had some levy dollars that could cover that. There's, you'll see in one of these slides, there's, on the program side, the programs, we can charge, the program basically was called an overhead charge, or we go indirect charge. So, for example, say that the revenue is $1 million, and we are allowed 5% indirect, and that money basically helps to support payroll, accounts payable, you know, some of these supervised, or some of these support type services. So, we always take as much indirect as is allowed. So, there's a difference between the revenue and the expenditures, and that difference is this indirect that we can charge to areas of programs. The other issue that's just to be aware, and we've talked about this before, is our educational programs and operation expenses levy. Also, call it the operations levy, has a bigger name now, enrichment, however you want to characterize that. That levy expires at the end of 2021, and so we would need to have a renewal in 2022. Actually, I should write on the scroll, the levy actually expires in 2022. The levy is run in 2022 before the 2023 calendar. Regardless, we need to start talking about the amount, and I brought that up there, needed to go. The amount, the length of the- Well, that, those are some of the challenges. The big ones, staffing and decline. Staffing is, I could look at the exact percentage, but it's probably like 80, 80 to 82% of our budget is personnel. So, there's a lot of, if you want to call it discretionary, supplies. So, here's a test for Mr. Ellis, who used to have, the word used to be called non-employee related costs. These are the costs that don't belong to, it's not payroll or payroll taxes and benefits. It's now called material supplies and operating costs, also known as SaaS.
Yeah, so, and as part of these allocations for, part of these allocations from the state, oftentimes, the state will come out and say, oh, we gave you a larger operating budget. Even when they put more money in, say like M-SOCs, a lot of times, that money will go into our contracts. Doesn't necessarily go into technology. So, you hear, you hear things about like, well, the, you know, in Olympia, they just gave millions of dollars to schools to buy technology, and oftentimes, that's part of negotiations, is that we supplement salaries in that way.
There are some positions that have been talked about, and asked for, I don't want to say begged for, but strongly requested right now. I have put these positions in. You'll see how much we're overspending right now. $2.6 million is projected for next year. So, technology help, hope Sean isn't turning technology off. We talked about security guard, talked about more historical staff, random high school, textbook adoption funds, those are things, as of right now, I've not included. Those are hard conversations, to prioritize the dollars. So, right now, they're not in there. We can certainly talk about it, and maybe the other thing I should have said at the outset. Budget is a projection, it's a forecast. It's, it's just that. It's a document that we're required to adopt. It's what we project is going to happen, but things change during the year, so it's, that's what it is. It's a budget, it's not exact, it weights enrollment. You know, I forecasted a drop of 70 kids, full-time equivalent for next year. $600,000 is right off the top, right? We have increased some staff this year. The math teacher, the math teacher, there are some-
The help for the nurse?
Or me?
The help for the nurse?
The nurse, yeah, the local assistant, the counselor, physician, now that's funded out of programs, out of extra dollars, so that's my main focus, I shouldn't say my main focus. My main concern is the basic education piece of that. I can say the other programs pretty much made it themselves. So, we have the enrollment history. As I stated here, the enrollment projected for 2021 was 2,426 students. We actually ended up with seven more. So, with COVID, I feel really was good about that. The projection is a decrease of 70. Oh, there's a time to look at it, I'm 20, should say, a decrease from 2021 budget, sorry. So, now, let's look at page 3, which is the enrollment estimation forecast for the current year, 2122, and then forecast for the next three years. And you'll see 2356, and then 2311, 2262, and 2224. So, those, just roll over, kind of look at the history, and just hopefully, my best estimation, not knowing the effect of COVID and masking and all these things that are, you know, soon going on. Next year, we'll have a decrease of 70. I would love to tell the board, well, we've increased, decreased up in 70, it's been 30, 20, maybe that would be great. But over the years, we've been fairly conservative in our projections. And so, to ensure you don't have to be too low, because we staff at, we got to staff those projections. We don't want to be too high, because they're some of our roots of contracts. So, that's the enrollment. The next page, page 4, is the history of the general fund, going back to the 1617 school year. So, this is the actual, so 1617, you see that, and then 1718, 1819, and 1920, the 2021 budget.
That's still the report page, is the full page.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, a little snap in there, am I?
That's okay.
Am I counting?
Next page, you think so?
So, we switch page 5 to page 4. So, go to page 5. So, you can see the actual, so I can get the 2021 budget.
2021, this is forecast, budget form F195.
Okay, so you need to go to page-
Page 6. Comparing 1617, yeah.
All right, sorry, Becky. There are figures-
Keep it on our list.
Compare it, how's that?
Yes.
Compare with these, then, 1617, first column. Going on through, where I wanted to point out, in the 2021 budget, the beginning fund balance is 3.5, and that's the action. So, of course, the budget had a different number, because it was budget, but now we know the actual was in that year, and then the rest of these numbers were the budget. So, now, who's on the list of experts? Is that the big one? Let's talk about that.
Don't we want to talk about page 5?
Yes, let's talk about page 5. So, that shows the budget for 2022, and then forecasted for next year. I want to point out that this is without any reductions of staffing or any program cuts or anything like that. The revenues are based on estimates, the expenses are based on estimates, based on the cost, the inflation, the implicit price definers, what the state basically funds the district. So, this is without any, anything changing, right? We just kept on, based on enrollment declining, and the staff, as you'll see, staying the same. Now, I would think that that's not realistic, because we won't have enough fund balance two years from now, you know, to operate the district. The district cannot go in a negative fund balance position. And fund balance, we just talked about that, really, that's, in essence, our savings account, the district's savings account. It's a balancing act. You don't want to have too much fund balance, because then, you know, unions will want, say you have too high of a fund balance, you don't have too low of a fund balance, because what if something happens, boiler, or some catastrophe happens, and you don't have that money? So, it's a balancing act. The state does not say you have to keep a certain percentage of the fund balance. We have a rule of thumb, that the district has tried to at least keep 5%, that rule of thumb was. It's not in a formal policy, but it's a rule of thumb, one month would be 8.3% of your expenses. You can see that certainly, if we didn't really look at changing for the 2223, then we would have, you know, $600,000 in fund balance, and then we would be in negative next year or something. Some boards want to talk about those future years. We have not really talked and discussed what we would do. We can do that, and we have, in my mind, we have a year to kind of correct things. Certainly, I'll look very closely every month at the budget and compare it to what we, what we projected. If the enrollment doesn't come in, there's positions we may have to freeze, there's, you know, there's things that we've done before. We were in this position a couple of years ago, and COVID, you know, basically helped save some of our budget, because we were able to charge some of the federal dollars and not use the district funds.
So, in some of the same operating, operating costs, like cotton machines, paper, substitutes, even utilities, so as far as heating and electric, underbelts were closed for a period of time. So, you know, we were able to reserve quite a bit of money that way during that crisis.
And so, this 2122 budget, I increased utilities because of the new high school. Twenty one, twenty two budget, I increased utilities because of the new high school. Uh, I have increased our substitute costs, there were five permanent substitutes, I believe, that, that. Are going to be hired, full-time, you know, full day, full-time substitutes for each building, that, uh. Since they're working more than six hundred and thirty hours, we're required to provide medical. Dental and vision insurance coverage for them. So that's, you know, a, a pretty healthy cost. With the rates higher than, than the normal substitute, you see. So, so there's some additional sub-costs there, and there are also. I just wanted to point out that. This, this current budget also has some positions that have not been filled yet. Uh, care professional, care educator positions, mostly the special education department. So let's, let's maybe go back, if you would, to. The big long sheet, page four. This is, this has a lot of information on it. In, in a nutshell, if you look at the. Comments of salaries, and then the M-SOCs are the non-salary. Your supplies operating, the cost, paper. Utilities, all the non-employee related total. And then, down at the bottom, where it says total expenses, we have forty two million, two hundred thirteen thousand, so that's the estimated expenses for twenty one, twenty two. The next column is the total revenue, and it has property taxes, and this is a pretty detailed. Uh, report, because it does, it shows the expenses and compares it to the revenues by, all, these are all various programs and grants. That are in the school district budget. Program four, special ed, federal, I mean, there's, there's a lot of these, a lot of these different programs. And going from left to right, total revenues, and then we have this indirect, that's what I talked about, then we have the net revenues, which is different between us two. So, a couple of, of comments, number one. If this budget was adopted, it would be a million, six hundred fifty three thousand more expenses than revenue. That's, that's not, that's not sustainable, so we, we really need to look and see where the enrollment is, and those kind of things, that we talked about. But, a couple of, a couple of these programs have. Uh, deficit spending, if you will, expenses more than. Than the revenue, that's basic education. One point three million over, that's in the far right-hand column, special education, six hundred and sixty five thousand. Food service, three hundred and four thousand. Let me make a comment about food service. This past year, twenty twenty one, food service has. Provided more meals than probably in history. Total breakfasts and lunches, that's because we delivered the breakfasts and lunches at the same time. On the buses. Obviously, our breakfasts are never as high as our lunch count, and so, I, again, try to be. Realistic, and since it will actually be breakfast and lunches sold on campus, at least right now. And so our, our revenue is, will, will drop, and this is typical with, with hard years, uh. It's, if you look throughout the state, not an excuse, but. Food service is not a profitable adventure.
So the federal government is not going to provide free lunches, free meals for all students together?
They are, yes, yes, alright, so, with this, the count, I estimated, you know, data count, nine fifty for lunches. I've got, you know, I've got the reverse rate, a lower amount, an average, going back to like eighteen nineteen year, earlier years, just to. I mean, I hope, I mean, again, we'll look at this every month and try to project and. But, our fund balance, so I guess I have good news and bad news, the good news is that our fund balance was far exceeded my projection. Well, mostly attributable to sub-costs, or, plus the, uh, food service. Probably generated in excess of maybe a hundred thousand, I can't remember right now, because the year's not been yet, but probably a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars more. Above the revenues, maybe two hundred thousand dollars more than expenses, so that's contributed to this. My estimation, four point two million dollar fund balance to start this school year.
Yeah, and in addition, uh, when, during COVID, we had our labor partners choose to rule their contracts, and so there wasn't. There wasn't an additional bump to one of our primary labor units, which was a teaching contract. Um, so, just to, to, um, kind of rough estimate. Um, we have a goal of five percent, maintaining five percent, uh, cash reserve, what is it about this point in time?
For the month. If the month of June. Cash reserve was, I think, four point four million.
Yeah, so, just a key point for people who are saying, oh, we're over budget, we're over budget, we're over budget, that's untrue. Correct, we're, our cash reserves are about ten, ten percent, and so we have a lot in that bank account.
Well, this, this is a really good format, that at the end of the year, when the year's done, I true up. What the actuals have been compared to the budget, and. So, again, there's a lot of information on this, but just as a nutshell. These are all the various programs, and here, let me just maybe make one other comment, you'll look, look at, uh, program fifty eight ninety nine. Which is entitled budget reserve. It also has six hundred fifty thousand dollars in expenses, and there's also six hundred fifty thousand dollars in revenues. And I want, this is a very important point, the, the board, if they were to approve this. This budget would authorize the district to spend forty two, two one three one ninety. Now, let's say, for example, that we receive, you know, ester four, or whatever, it's, you know, ester three is not in this budget, ester two is. You know, the federal cares act would say that you get ester four money, so we. Three million dollars for conversation. Then that would exceed the forty two ninety dollars, so we would need to extend the budget. To have more authorization to spend above of the forty two ninety. So, and that is formally called a budget extension, and I'll talk a little bit about that more when. Alright, this is any other pages, let's see, to, saw page five. Six is the comparison. I think that's all for the general fund, then just at the bottom of the cover sheet. Beginning fund balance estimated at four point two million. Here again, here's red money, uh, there are some state programs that we actually receive the dollars during the school year. But if we don't spend all of it, we can carry that money forward, so, it's almost, so, say that. Our own personal bank accounts, for whatever reason, you know, we got a hundred thousand dollars, uh, but we only spent eighty. We still need to spend that twenty next year. That's the first, you know, first money that's carried over, goes out, so, those are reserved, we don't, we don't have, those are red monies, we can't. Use those money for utilities, or whatever else we want to spend it on, so these state programs are reserved, we have this rent improvement. Program. High poverty. Career and technical ed, again, these numbers are estimates are probably a little bit low, but when we do the year-end, we'll, we'll true it up. And then, there's some, sometimes we prepay items, items that could belong as an expense next year, but we need to pay them this year. And then there's some reserve or resource, and forth, it's only about twenty five, thirty thousand. So that's the general fund, that which is the biggest fund. These other funds, you know, I'll try to get you out of here now. So far so good? Any questions on the general fund? Okay, so. Capital project is fund twenty. That is meant to construct. Obviously, we're using this for a high school and remodeling three elementary schools, there's the history, you can see certainly, and. In the two thousand sixteen, seventeen, I think it was February of seventeen, is when the bond passed. We received sixty nine million dollars, and now throughout the years, we're going to spend those dollars. And. For the twenty twenty one, a year-end, uh, I've had conversation, so. As you know, we had talked about having. A budget extension meeting for the capital project fund. Couple of weeks, two, three weeks ago, I was meeting with Dan Pureboy, and, and we were looking at the numbers, and. Felt like we, we would maybe need to have a budget extension, and again, if this extension would. Authorize us to spend a little more money this year, and we wouldn't, it's, it's a timing issue. Hey, do we spend money this year, or we spend it next year, there's been some bills that were going to be close, we're going to be close to this, the actual budget. The board authorized was like thirty one million, seven hundred, so I'm thinking we're going to be, you know, four or five thousand dollars less than that. At the end of August, so if the board meeting next week, there'll be, be about three point five million of expenditures in. The capital project fund, that will be the balance of about, about the three and a half million. That should take place, that should cover the August billings that will actually pay in September. So our district. Is on the, is not on the cash basis of accounting purposes, meaning you spend it, that's when it's charged to the fund. We're on the accrual basis, so August bills we approve back that are paid in September, so. Speaking with Dan today, uh, he said I, I think that he will be fine, so we're in essence going to cancel, uh. The exact, the, uh, resolution to extend the capital project. We won't really know until, you know, probably the middle of September, beginning of September, what the number actually is. I'm confident that it will be less than, you know, that.
Yeah, no. That was a move, uh. Because Craig is very, very.
That's a conservative thing to say.
Yeah, and I am too, uh, and so, uh, like you said, it, it will be close, but we're confident that, uh, we'll be able to do without an extension.
So, this is ongoing, what I want to point out is, this is, so the forecast, which is on page eight. Is, does not include, uh, bus garage, remodel, all those kind of things. So thi- this is just. Moving on with the, the construction projects, includes Wood Strand. Uh, the high school should be done here shortly, might be plenty some, it will carry over expenses in September. But, the rest of this, obviously, the fund balance is going down, because we're spending money. And we'll receive state match, we've only received eight million dollars of state match so far this year. Dan has submitted a claim, not sure if we get that in September or not, there again, it's a time, it's a timing issue. Whether it comes this August, or whether it comes in September, is, is, you know, that's, that's not really an issue we're concerned about. So that's, that's what's going on with capital project. The next page is the debt service fund, that is the fund that pays the mortgages, right, pays the. The principal and interest, not only on the construction bond, but there are some vehicles that were purchased. With a non-voted bond. And, there were some buses that were purchased, non-voted, those are called limited general obligation bonds. So, the transportation vehicle fund, which we'll talk about in a minute, on ninety, its purpose is only to pay for buses. And we can incur debt, and then use that fund to transfer money to the debt service fund to make the payments on the debt. So that's, that's what this sheet is showing, you'll see that there are, there's a, the budget for next year. This does have, uh, the purchase, uh. I look, no, some, some, see, I'm talking about debt service, sorry. Excuse me, I'm talking about transportation, so, don't hear what I said. We, we transfer the, the money from the TVF to the debt service fund to make the payments on the debt. But my point was going to be that you'll notice that the non-voted debt towards the bottom, that the, the payments are, are dropping, the buses will be paid off, the debt will be paid off. So that's, that's the comparative data, the next sheet is. For gas in two to three years. The present source for. On is, uh, levy, or tax levy, to help maybe pay this on, on the construction bond.
That was the bond that was passed, uh, February of seventeen.
Next one is ASB, Associate Student Body, under number forty. And this is, this is the student's aid, students' dollars, right? And, so what can be spent on that?
The, the acronym is CARS, which he has down there, cultural, athletic, recreational, social activities. Um, one distinguishing characteristic of this is that, um, it's an agreement, actually, the students have to agree, it's their money oftentimes. Raised through fundraisers, fundraisers for, um, admission prices to sporting events, KSB, card sales, um, playdates, things of that nature, but I go back. Choose to spend a number of different things, uh, coaches, athletic equipment, uh, dances. Parties, the, uh. Classroom parties, repeats and stuff.
The high school, the high school budget is actually. Given, approved on by the student body, and given to me, so, I really don't. Do much with this, except with the numbers on the paper, so, this is really, it's, obviously, we have a student body in each school. Very small amounts, as you can see, Wood Strand. Two one thousand, ARB, fifty four, high is thirty six, middle school sixty seven, the lion's share certainly is at the high school level.
And expending those funds is, uh, it's between the, uh, buildings, uh, ASB. Uh, ASB.
Officers and treasurer.
And the building principal, and you're just maintaining that, making sure that it doesn't over-expend.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And I, I, I should point out that, that these numbers are way high, it's, you know, it's, they've always been. Throughout the years, the, the revenue is high, the expenses are high. But that's good, because if the expenses were low, instead more, we have to extend it, just, just like the. So that's the ASB. And then forecasted. Basically, I, I use this implicit price deflator. This is possibly insane, two or more money, I spend a lot of money, so the fund balance could go up, there was an issue with. This house bill sixty sixty, and that whole. There was an issue with this house bill, sixteen sixty, and that whole lack of student, student cards, those kind of things. There is a grant that we're going to apply for that's due the end of August. Hopefully, we could give this for ten thousand dollars specifically for this case, so I'm working on, on that case. The last fund, transportation vehicle fund number ninety. There we go. We were gonna, the last column, under bus purchases, a hundred seventy-five thousand. So the budget is to buy one more bus next year. Amy, they want me to discuss seatbelts. And she'll be here next, next Wednesday to answer some questions. But her recommendation is on this trip bus, not to get the seatbelts. And she does have a quote. We normally, again, the state has quotes for prices. We can purchase buses at those prices so that we don't have to go out and bid. State does all that. Certainly, we can add things on, as we do. Seat buses, or seatbelts would be one. Rear engine, I mean, those kind of things, options are on the district. The revenue source for this is depreciation. You'll see I'm estimating two hundred and one thousand in depreciation. The state will pay us as we continue purchasing buses. I believe it's an eighteen-year depreciation schedule. If you want on that, we can change in that too, but depreciated and the state pays us back. So that is one thing. I'm sure we'll talk about that or if the recommendation is not to have the seatbelts.
One of the other moves of buses that we've made was internet access. So students can, now with the one-to-one, student-to-device ratio, kids can be on the bus traveling to, say, Quincy or someplace and log into their, on their Google Chromebook and, and do homework while they're on the bus. As well as, we use those during the pandemic, some of them to try and foster connectivity, knowing that if we park the bus somewhere, it could, kids could log into that. So that's another move that we made.
And the last page there would just be the forecast, I could see where buying one bus for each year in the next three years. Again, just an estimate of a five thousand dollar increase in purchase prices here.
But it's offset by the money you receive from the depreciation on those buses covers the cost for each of those new buses.
Yeah, you'll see, two, again, these are projections. There are OSBI's website, two hundred and one thousand, one ninety-six, and then two nine, two four. So, yeah, you need to keep buying buses. We need to keep surplusing all buses. They're more appreciated. It's just a, just a routine. A number of years ago, we bought two for a couple of years, just to get some of these were bought on a contract. Maybe that was thanks to you and your, your expertise in that because pass it not, purchase buses on contract, which begins another conversation from another time about any, any of the tax dollars that we receive if we have to. So you need to have responsible debt be able to pay off and, and that's the way we are. So that's really all that I have. The, just that one comment, and I'm not sure if I made myself clear on this. There are more professional positions that we've not filled yet. And that would be about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, you know, within the next week, we'll have conversations. It's not going to be a popular one. But it's one of the things we need to have. Get the budget, yeah, a hundred and ninety thousand, maybe add some more dollars in for, fix an option or whatever.
Yeah, we're still refining by tuning this. And so we'll continue to work on it. Just like we have years before, we work with the board and listen to the board. So Craig, Craig and his team, Becky.
Yeah, I'll be right. Failed to introduce Becky, my trusty assistant. She does all the work.
Yeah, so they, they do and have done just a tremendous job in the past years in keeping us, keeping us in a good spot financially. So, yeah, I have a lot of trust and respect for, for the job that they're doing. We'll continue to work on it.
So any further questions, comments?
Do you have a question? I had it pretty much, but we went over when I gave that.
So just, just real quick, so next week, six-thirty is the public hearing. It'll be a lot shorter conversation. Certainly, these can be posted on the district website or the district budget will be. So patrons can, it'll be just a brief presentation to board and then open it up for questions. There's our patrons and then they will close the hearing, as you know, and then open the regular meeting. We don't have to wait till seven, just be right after. We can post it to start at six-thirty.
And just as, just as kind of a point of meeting, I guess, we, we have been able to, I mean, we've never been in a financial situation where we've had to reduce in force or even brought that to the board for consideration. And so, again, I'd read that to Craig and Becky and his leadership in that area that we're in a, we're in a healthy spot.
I guess I want to thank Craig. You have done a really good job of leading us every, through the, the budget process. I believe we've done a great job of managing the district's money and I think, love, and Becky too, yeah.
Thank you.
Still tough times ahead, honestly. It's a concern, but we, we will deal with it if we have.
There's never really any surprises, I mean, because you keep us informed as we move through, you know, where, where the downfalls are.
Like I said, this year, our expenses have been way lower than what we expected, so that, that's been one of the issues.
Okay, is that, is that it? Okay, then, I would, if there's no, this is a, a special study session, so we can only discuss what's on the agenda. So I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. G D, thank you. Jess, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye. Aye, so all ayes. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thanks, Jess, for coming.